You ready? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one Mill Creek Township's School District Board Meeting. We're shooting live on YouTube this evening, and this meeting will be recorded. You can also see this evening's agenda as well as a number of additional information items on our website, www.mtsd.org. In addition, please visit us and like us on our Facebook page, Mill Creek Township School District, which has new posts added on a regular, ongoing basis. I'm considering we have roll call, please.
Mr. Busco.
Here.
Ms. Capabianca.
Here.
Mr. Dean.
Here.
Mr. DePosito.
Here.
Dr. Lansbury.
Here.
Mr. Lindner.
Here.
Ms. McClintock.
Here.
Mr. Winchell.
Here.
Mrs. Winchell.
Here.
Dr. Roberts.
Here.
And Attorney Senate.
Here.
Thank you. One point zero-two executive session announcement. There will be an executive session for personnel reasons after this board meeting today, March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. One point zero-three approval of the agenda, and there are two addendums. That will be added to the superintendent's report, nine point zero-three, which is a virtual presentation for your kickoff. Nine point zero-four, the recess. Coverage. That will also be added. Also, there was an executive session that was held on March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one for the purpose of personnel as well. So, may I have a motion for the amended agenda for this evening? Motion, Chris.
Second, Janine.
Any discussion? Again, nine point zero-three and nine point zero-four be added on the superintendent's report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay, one point zero-four, pledge of allegiance. Everyone could stand, please.
Aye. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without borders, with equal rights and freedoms.
Thank you. Two point zero-one, school board meeting minutes, February the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one. They have a motion, please.
Motion, John.
Second, Chris. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Two point zero-two, committee of the whole minutes of March the eighth, two thousand twenty-one. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Dean.
Second.
Second, Lisa.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Two point zero-three, special board meeting minutes of March the tenth, two thousand twenty-one. May I have a motion, please? Motion, Chris.
Second, Shirley.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Hearing none, motion passes. Three point zero-one, visitors. Consider we have some visitors this evening, please.
Mr. Ali Oda, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I could hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. You have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, administration, board directors, students, parents, taxpayers, residents, and voters of Mill Creek Township School District. Let me begin with a quote. Whoever would overthrow the liberty of a nation must begin by subduing the freeness of speech. From Benjamin Franklin. Does anyone know the Pennsylvania Rules of Professional Conduct for Attorneys and have read the same question? In the Pennsylvania Commonwealth, the explanation to the public for the basis or foundation of filing any litigation against an elected public official and having taxpayers pay for it without any written legal opinion from the legal-appointed public solicitor, only from a motion from another public official who has no license to practice law is a violation of law in the Pennsylvania Commonwealth and is paramount to the judicial process. The attorney-client privilege is not absolute. What is prosecutorial misconduct? How long does it take to communications between a board president and a member of the community, who happens also to be a shareholder in the school district's educational and financial programs? Topic: Violation of Public School Codes. I encourage any public official and taxpayers to read the codes. I will present a description of the violations at the April Cal meeting. In the meantime, please review Public School Code, Section six oh eight, liability for improper school orders. Section six oh nine, budgeted funds not to be used for other purposes or exceeded. Section six-ten, use of school funds, illegal use. On another topic, the legality of the Public School Code and district policies. Have all board directors read the rules of construction when developing district policies and when voting to spend taxpayer funds? Please indulge me. This is straight from the District Policy Manual. In ascertaining the intent of the board in adopting a policy or of the administration in establishing a regulation, the following presumptions, among other legally applicable presumptions, may be used. That neither the board nor the administration intends a result that is absurd, impossible of execution, or unreasonable. That neither the board nor the administration intends to violate the federal or state constitutions or any other applicable law. In any policy or administrative regulation can be given multiple interpretations, both constitutional and unconstitutional, or both lawful and unlawful. The board and the administration intend that only the constitutional and lawful interpretation shall be valid. And that neither an unconstitutional nor unlawful interpretation was intended. Now, please try your very best and explain to the taxpayers. And this comes from the minutes of a board meeting. How can Donnie Hosford, former school board director, made a board motion seconded by Chris Busco, who is a present school board director and a twenty-one candidate for a board seat, at the board meeting, January twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, to pay Attorney Wyndham Weckler legal fees for a counterclaim, when he has no law license to determine the legality of his motion, yet approved by the board? Appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Mr. President, in regard to Mr. Ali Oda's comments and his interpretation of the law, I don't want members of the public to assume that that interpretation is correct, nor that he has any legal basis for the statements he's making. Those are his opinions and nobody else's opinions. And, and I don't want the members of the public to believe what he is saying is factually nor legally correct. So, in fact, what he said in certain circumstances was legally incorrect. And I want the board members to be aware of that, and members of the public to be aware of that. He's entitled to express his opinion, and he clearly has. But I don't want the public or the board to be misled in regard to what he's saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Senate, for some clarification there. Let me sit here. Anyone else?
We don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, I'll just ask, is there any other visitors that would like to speak this evening?
We have one.
Okay.
You hear me?
Mr. Pierce.
Yes, can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah. Can you just give us your full name and your address, please?
Yes, Dan Pierce, four-three-four-zero, Lester Lane, Erie one-six-five oh six.
Thank you.
I was joining the meeting tonight to speak on behalf of our track and field student athletes. I have a senior, a junior, a seventh grader, all participating in track this spring. And I wanted to speak to the board this evening in regards to the past decision to enforce mask-wearing during training and competition. I myself am a runner. I ran this afternoon about the same time that my daughter, who is a senior at McDowell, was participating in her track practice, my son shortly thereafter, who is a sophomore. It was seventy-one degrees. I did not wear a mask while I was running. Honestly, I cannot imagine running in those temperatures, seventy-one, which is only moderately hot. Obviously, it's been cold recently, so compared to the past, it's warmer than it has been. But I cannot imagine running a race, and I was not running a race, I was just out for a run, but running a race like a four-hundred, a mile, a two-mile on the track, the track being warmer than the surrounding environment in temperatures anywhere near seventy-one degrees. I would vehemently request that each and every one of you go out in the next few days. It's supposed to be nice all week in what is only relatively warm weather, and wear a mask while participating in any activity that you choose. Go for a run, go for a hike, go for a rock, go for a bike ride while wearing a mask. And then I would like you to defend that the decision to enforce mask-wearing during competition, let alone training, is in the safest health interest of our high school and middle school-aged athletes. My children also run cross-country. We made it through the entire fall cross-country season when cases were much higher, transmission was much higher, without any incidences with reasonable mask mandates, which was you wear a mask to practice, you take it off while practicing, you put it on while congregating and speaking, and you do not wear them while racing. Again, I would request all of you to go out with whatever activity you think would be comparable for yourself compared to what our high school athletes, especially those endurance races, the longer distances, the more difficult distances, and then come back in a week or two and tell me that you honestly believe that is what is best for our athletes. Not even taking into account athletes who have other medical conditions, such as asthma, which my son, who is a sophomore, does suffer from. And one of the including rain, where the mask would become wet and breathing would be near impossible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other visitors to speak this evening? Last call. Any other visitors?
I see no more hands.
Okay. You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks all for speaking this evening. Four point zero-one, old business. Any old business? Hearing none. Item five, instruction in student services. Mrs. Winchell.
Thank you. I have only two items for action this evening. Both of these were part of the committee meeting agenda items two weeks ago. Five point zero-one is the Dr. Gertrude Barber Center Service Agreement. It's amended. It's for the educational services designed to meet the individual needs of a student with their IEP. The agreement has been amended. Originally, it went September eighth of two thousand twenty to June eleventh of two thousand twenty-one. And it has been amended to go through February eighteen of two thousand twenty-one. The second item, five point zero-two, is the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one McDowell High School Spring Athletics tentative schedule. The schedules included there are boys JV baseball, boys JV lacrosse, boys JV volleyball, boys varsity baseball, boys varsity lacrosse, boys varsity tennis, boys varsity track, boys varsity volleyball, girls JV lacrosse, girls JV softball, girls varsity lacrosse, girls varsity softball, and girls varsity track. I'd like to bring five point zero-one and five point zero-two forward as a motion.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Six, item six, personnel and policy cleaning.
Uh, thank you, President Winchell. We don't have any policies. We do have the personnel report with some changes from the board, from the, from any of the whole meeting. I'll go through those. At Bell Valley, we have a leave of absence of a special education assistant. Um, of two special, excuse me, of two special education assistants. At Grandview, we had a recommendation for an educational assistant. However, the candidate has declined the position. At Westlake, we have a leave of absence of a staff nurse. And at McDowell Intermediate, we have a change of status from a full-time second ship custodian to a full-time first ship custodian. And that's also from Chestnut Hill to MIHS. Um, we have another change of a second ship custodian to a full ship custodian from Tracy to MIHS. At the Education Center, we have added a person to our summer maintenance crew. And we have our first student employee activity. We have two new people. One termination retired, and then we have a virtual grades, virtual teacher for grade seven and eight science by letter of appointment. And that is everything, so I'll make a motion to bring that forward.
Have a second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Yes. Hearing none, motion passes. Like to remind the public that this will be viewable by the public after this meeting. Item seven, month-end closed reports. Mr. O'Toole.
Good evening. Seven point oh-one are the student activity accounts. I would need a motion to approve.
Make a motion, Janine.
You have a second, please.
Chris, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Seven point oh-two and seven point oh-three are the enrollment summary, investment summaries. Those are only informational items. Does anybody have any questions regarding those items? Okay, moving on to seven point oh-four are the budget transfers for this month. Seven point oh-five is the bond summary for this month. Uh, seven point oh-six is the treasurer summary for the month of February. And seven point oh-seven is the, are the financial reports for the month of February.
So, can I have a motion for seven point oh-four, seven point oh-five, seven point oh-six, and seven point oh-seven?
Show move, Shirley. Second. Janine.
Thank you, Janine. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Thank you. Anybody, finance and operations committee, Mr. Lindner.
Thank you, Mr. Winchell. Uh, we have six items this evening. All six items were brought forward at the committee of the whole meeting two weeks ago. Uh, first item is item eight oh-one, U and S Service Agreement. Uh, this is a agreement for a hundred hours of service for labor and programming of our building automation systems across various buildings. Eight point oh-two is the Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit Budget for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Eight point oh-three is the Mill Creek Township School District Fees for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. I would like to note that there were no changes to those fees for this year, uh, for next year as well. Eight point oh-four, student activity account officers for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Uh, there were two updated, uh, McDowell had an update to the math club and to the class of twenty-two officers. And MIHS had updated, uh, to the school store officers. Eight point oh-five was Northwest Tri-County RU-five Internet Service Agreement, which is to increase the district's broadband service to three gigabytes for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Uh, this should allow us to not exceed our current broadband limits of the one and a half gigabytes that we had this past year, which we topped out at at certain times during the year. And item eight point oh-six is the accounts payable report. Um, that is the accounts payable report for March, and it is also the payroll report for March twelfth and February twenty-sixth. I'd like to bring those six items forward as a block. I have a motion.
Make a motion, Janine.
You have a second?
Second, Dean.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
That's all we have this evening from the Finance and Planning Committee.
Thank you. Another superintendent's report. Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, President Winchell. Good evening, everyone. This evening, there are two items listed on the agenda under the superintendent's report, and there are an additional two items that are part of an addendum. And it's nine point zero-one, nine point zero-two, two or three, zero-four. Item number one, nine point zero-one, uh, the charter school spending reform. Uh, this is a reoccurring resolution here for the board's action. And it's a resolution that is signed annually, based on what was shared with me, um, by board members from our neighboring districts as well, neighboring districts. And the resolution actually calls for charter school funding reform by the board of directors uh, because of what is deemed to be this parties and funding that goes towards charter schools.
Make a motion that we accept this.
Do you have a motion on that, please?
Make a motion that we accept and sign this.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second, or discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Second item, item number nine, point zero-two, generators. At the Mill Creek Township School District, of course, we are in the midst of a number of important and uh, significant capital projects, and certainly on the guidance and watchful eyes of our team here. This work is led by Mike Gallagher. And, and one of the key takeaways as a part of our upcoming projects for the summer of twenty twenty-one is for us to look at not just creating spaces, the right spaces, up-to-date spaces for students, teachers, and staff, but to do so in a way that are cost-effective, and also thinking about ideas such as how are we protecting the environment? And so one of those recommendations, I think, came, and there's been a lot of data from our engineer. We're going to request to look at the generators that will be installed in these upcoming projects. And there were options of whether or not we should go with diesel generators versus natural gas. Uh, and so while my sort of proletariat stand in the knowledge of diesel versus natural gas is not up to speed, I will certainly call Mr. Gallagher to provide us with a little bit of an update, but a distinction.
So, I will try to summarize this real quick, just to bring everybody up to speed for those that were around, just reminding them, and then those that are new. Um, so basically, right now, nine of our twelve buildings have natural gas generators. Uh, three of them do not. McDowell Intermediate, Grandview, Mill Creek. All right, back in two thousand nineteen, uh, we had a generator replacement at MEC that was natural gas. Uh, we didn't get any comments for that. Twenty twenty, uh, Grandview got flagged, uh, saying that it required they wanted the diesel generator. They were not going to allow natural gas, uh, based on the code. So, it was sort of last minute. So it was sort of last minute. We made the change. Um, we brought that forward to the board. I know some of you were, um, questioning, uh, why we made that decision, uh, which completely understands. So with that, uh, we looked into that a little bit more. We had already moved forward with Grandview, uh, so we, you know, we stayed the course with that. Uh, so then this year, um, we, uh, I talked to a bunch of the design teams, talked to a lot of, uh, different projects that have gone on, and, uh, the consensus seemed to be, um, that depending on what reviewer you got, determined whether they would flag it and want a diesel generator as opposed to natural gas. Um, so we went into the projects this year doing the base bid of the construction as a natural gas generator, and then we did an alternate bid for diesel, with the idea being at least then we would get a cost. If they flagged it again, then we would have the conversation, uh, and make the decision whether we wanted to go, you know, deal the process, figure out whatever we needed to do. So we sent the drawings to BIU in August. Um, in December, I got verbal that the drawings were all approved, uh, so I figured, hey, we got the right individual inspecting them. They were all right with doing the natural gas generators. Uh, we signed all the contracts, approved all the contracts, ordered everything in February. On March twelfth, I got a call saying that they wanted us to go to diesel generators as opposed to the natural gas generators. Then I tried to figure out, well, what do they need? Uh, and the biggest reason for them wanting to do this is they want a primary source on the site. Uh, they don't want us to have to rely on a utility company to provide a fuel in order to run a generator, which is your emergency lighting. Um, and other miscellaneous things, but the emergency lighting is what they're truly concerned about. Uh, so with that, uh, I contacted National Fuel, um, and got a letter from them, uh, basically stating that, uh, you know, based on their requirements as being a public utility provider, they're required to provide, uh, natural gas to everybody, especially us, as we are a essential human needs use, uh, and labeled a priority one. So basically that's saying, hey, we will do everything in our power to make sure you have natural gas. They still, uh, were not interested in, uh, accepting that, uh, which is fair. That is their, um, you know, they, they have that right to do that as the reviewer. Um, so the code that they're referencing, um, there is an exception listed in there. It says, "We're acceptable to the authority having jurisdiction. The use of other than onsite fuel shall be permitted where there is a low probability of a simultaneous failure of both the off-site fuel delivery system and power from the outside electric utility company." So right within the code, they have the right, as the authority having jurisdiction, to waive that requirement for us to use, uh, a diesel generator. However, they are not, uh, they are not budgeting on that. Uh, I talked to them multiple times, and, uh, that's the stance he's taking, is that he would like us to use the diesel generator. So with that, I did look into what are the true differences between it. Um, and basically, everything that I read, uh, you really don't want to go with diesel fuel, uh, for a generator. Uh, the biggest thing is the fuel's going to sit in the tank. I was reading anywhere, it could take up to twenty years to actually burn all of the oil within the tank. Based on the size requirements, you're only running a test every week. Um, so basically, the diesel fuel sits in there. So even after a year, you'll already get oxidation starting. Uh, you can get, uh, microorganisms and other things that start growing in the tank. Um, so it's, it's not great to have that sitting on there. On top of that, um, the other big thing is if you did have an emergency, um, you probably only have enough diesel fuel for two or three days. So at that point, now you're relying on a truck to come in, whereas if you use a natural gas, you can use that indefinitely. Um, also, uh, cost-wise, uh, so I looked up the rates, uh, today, um, because I was reading an article from an older, uh, older article. A hundred and fifty kilowatt generator, uh, running for twenty-four hours costs eight hundred and twenty-four dollars, uh, if it's a diesel generator, four hundred and fifty-six if it's natural gas. Uh, you obviously still have to do refuel it, um, because you got to keep it at a certain level. Uh, so every year, uh, we go around those three buildings, pull up the truck, refuel the tanks, uh, which obviously, uh, is a little bit of an inconvenience, but, uh, it's necessary, uh, to make sure we're meeting all the code requirements. Uh, with that, natural gas is more environmentally friendly. Uh, I will say they've gotten better on the diesel generators, uh, but it's still, natural gas is the way to go, uh, from the environmental, uh, perspective. Uh, and then on top of that, the initial cost. Uh, so right now, the issue is, uh, we did get those, um, alternate bids, uh, but unfortunately, we've already ordered the generator. So I don't know what kind of fee comes with that. I'm guessing it'll be at least twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, and that's total for all four projects, uh, which isn't too bad, because last year, the, uh, Grandview one ended up costing about ten thousand dollars. Uh, so again, assuming the alternate numbers are roughly the same, the fees aren't too bad. If we did just release the generators in February, um, maybe we're not looking bad in that regard. Um, I will say, uh, though with the, uh, two diesel generators we have at Walnut Creek and McDowell Intermediate, we have not had any major issues with them. Uh, so even though, you know, there's all these, these problems that do occur with diesel generators, we've been lucky to this point with those two buildings. So I did want to bring that up. Uh, so as far as where we go from here, uh, I've been trying to figure out what the appeal process is. I can't get anybody to actually tell me exactly what it is. Uh, I know we've been in contact with the Mill Creek Township, trying to understand, you know, can they give us an appeal process, or who do we go to? Uh, to this point, we haven't figured that out. So we'll keep trying on that. So I guess I just wanted to bring this forward and see what, what we wanted to do.
Yeah, so, uh, Mike and, and Mike and John, maybe you know, but, so, because I had asked someone, a couple of people that are familiar with, uh, you know, facilities, county and things like that, they mentioned that perhaps you're going to feel it's a labor and industry, someone above them, they could override this. Is that a possibility?
I, you know, and that's, that's another thing I, I was thinking, but I guess, again, you, you can either, I don't think at this point they have any authority, because again, when you talk township, I mean, they hired BIU, so labor and industry is kind of, they're not in charge of us anymore in that regard. Uh, I mean, I would do that. That's, again, I just, I'm not sure who to call.
Yeah, they have to report to someone.
Right.
Someone's going to be there, you know, monitor.
And that's where, you know, Mike, Mike was sharing with me.
Mr. Wintle, to, to speak to labor and industry, which, uh, Mill Creek Township School District does not use to, uh, approve their projects for permitting. Um, but the labor and industry I can speak to, because I use them in my other profession, and there is an appeals process, and typically, we will get flagged exactly like this project did. We go to the appeals process, and every time we've gone to an appeal, we've always been approved, because NFG can provide a letter. Um, on top of the issues that Mike has shared with us, in addition to that, there's also the environmental health safety concern of what happens if you have a diesel. You have to inspect it on a regular basis to make sure you don't dump two hundred gallons of diesel into the dirt, because those tanks sit there for decades, and you got to look at them every single week. Um, there's just a lot more upkeep with them. I would think that the Mill Creek Township has subcontracted out their responsibility as zoning board to BIU. They should be the group that we appeal to. I mean, there has to be an appeal process. BIU reports to somebody. I would like to think there's an appeal process.
It would be, uh, identified within the, the township ordinance itself, uh, depending on what the construction code is that Mill Creek Township has adopted. Uh, you look at the ordinance itself, the ordinance will have an appeal process, and so if you look at the ordinance, uh, labor and industry is, is no longer doing this. That's why you have BIU. So they're really out of the, the building with. So it, there is an appeal process, though. Uh, we can look up the ordinance and provide that to you, and, uh, tell you where to go from there.
Mike, I, you know, it, for all the reasons that you mentioned, gas is definitely, diesel is, bro, I don't know how big these things are, K W I's.
Hundred and fifty, I think.
Yeah, that's big. Yeah, you know, you, like Mike said, you need most, you need to monitor. You got to worry about the temperature, you know, the coal. You got to start this thing up, and you got diesel people out there, and there's, you know, and all that stuff. There's no way that we would want, I think, diesel for a generator. Natural gas certainly where to go, but apparently someone's got something, and I, I just, I think we ought to pursue it. We ought to pursue getting that.
Okay. Okay.
Strongly agree. John, I think that it's something to pursue. On top of that, you also have to consider, like you said, diesel is not as clean as natural gas. We have children in these buildings. We really want diesel generators running, emitting diesel fumes under our buildings.
You know, realistically, I mean, the, the emergency generators are for lighting, right? Just to get people out.
Exactly.
Once they're out,
Right.
you know, you don't need a large, I, I mean, that's the thing. I think it's three minutes or so.
Right. Well, and the only way you could use the building, say you wanted to use it for an extended period of time, is you need the natural gas for heat, uh, for the boilers you want to have for that.
And that it's sized properly, that's how it needs to be.
Right.
It is not, but if you plan to do that, then it's size.
Well, and that's where we are putting the controls for the boilers on emergency power to be able to run the heat, so we don't freeze anything.
Well, is that the fan? I mean, is that everything? Or just the control?
Just the controls and the boilers themselves will run in the house pumps.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I would pursue it.
Pursue it, huh?
Okay. Yeah, I actually read an article that one of these manufacturers, these diesel generators, are going to start phasing them out over the next ten or fifteen years as well.
Yeah.
Some of the big manufacturers, yeah.
Okay.
Compared to natural gas.
Yeah, okay. So I'll stay the course. I won't tell the contractors to order anything different. Uh, BIU's actually going to, I don't know how that works, but they're going to defer
this middle and actually issue us the permit, um, which, which is interesting that they were going to do that. Um, so we'll, uh, we'll figure out the field process and go through that, um, and keep those generators coming, and hopefully we get that resolved. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, so at this point, uh, guidance for Mike is to just to pursue the course, desire of the board. Thank you. Item number nine point zero three, uh, virtual presentation for school year kickoff. Um, we are, uh, certainly in the throes of planning and preparing for what promises to be an exciting twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We believe that by this time, by the time we get to the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, uh, you are going to be out of the pandemic to a great extent. That's, uh, our hope. And so, um, as is customary, we are going to kick off the school year with teachers returning for, um, in-service, uh, professional development, but also we call it back to school kickoff. And typically, we would have a kickoff keynote speaker, and we've had a team, um, that comprised of, uh, district office leaders, curriculum instructional team, the core team, um, just looking for a keynote speaker who will probably meet maybe at least three different criteria. One, someone who can really provide an inspirational kickoff. Who can make sure that at the end of his or her speech, gets our teachers and staff to think about possibilities beyond your wildest dream as they're serving students. Secondly, uh, someone who can actually, um, really speaks to a topic that is correct, that is relevant, that resonates with not only the times in which we're in, but also really resonates with teachers and staff. And thirdly, uh, this idea that a keynote speaker at the beginning of the year kickoff should speak to a topic or share some points that teachers and staff can reflect on during the course of the year. And to this end, we have landed on a keynote speaker, um, who will provide our kickoff speech virtually. Um, and so we bring it to you tonight for action, the approval of the contract for a virtual presentation that will be kicked off on August thirty, two thousand and twenty-one.
Do you need a motion? I'll make a motion to bring the virtual speaker.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second, Dean.
Any, first, and say, any discussion?
I have some question. Um, so this is an hour long, am I understanding the virtual presentation?
That is correct.
And her fee is seventy-five hundred?
That is correct.
Is that, do we have any indication of what we spent in the past for speakers?
I do not. I can have someone.
For an hour? That sounds like one money.
Actually, at least the other people that we looked at were ten thousand, higher.
What does that day normally cost us in the, in the budget?
The speaker is the fee for that day in the past. Uh, if you have sometimes breakfast, but that won't be an issue this year. Speakers has, throw tools that are right around that, and actually, uh, Dr. Tucker was, like I said, about twenty-five hundred, the three thousand dollars cheaper.
Who did we have last?
We had, oh, man, yes, thank you.
And I don't remember being that much.
And the whole, um, the Congress, the whole, uh, we, expectations of us dealing with how, you know, when I be in a stressor, hard return to coming back to school, you know, pandemic. This part of our SEL, not that, as a political speaker. Are other national speakers, we, we, one, whatever.
What was the last time we had a national speaker?
I would, I would have started at the, I want to. You've had a national speaker every year since I have come to the district, except for.
Oh, I just don't remember anything.
I think more, it was about fifteen hundred dollars last year. Still. I mean, not, not cheap, but not fifty dollars.
Are you able to share with us, um, what the topic is, or, or do you prefer?
Um, Dr. Tucker, uh, bestselling author, she's an international speaker, keynote speaker, she was a teacher for fifteen years at the elementary level. Uh, she earned her doctorate in learning technology from Becker County, um, where she is currently a professor. Um, she also works as a blended learning coach and an educational consultant. She's written four books on blended learning, which are around blended learning, blended learning in action, power of blended learning, and blended learning in great support as well. So when we were looking for someone that could be highly inspirational and motivational, um, her ability to really make those connections about utilizing uh, technology, whether you're in a face-to-face, a virtual, um, environment, you know, still blending, you know, the different types of instructions, so that we are really trying to support our teachers throughout the transition, if they have paid as well as what they might be thinking, teacher, and giving technology support on what we're doing.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, any other questions, comments, concerns? Hey, hearing none. Uh, and we have a first and a second, and, uh, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Against.
Okay, motion passes.
Final item of this superintendent's report is item number nine point zero four, recess coverage. Uh, or you may recall, uh, that on the, on February second, uh, I had recommended and brought for approval, the payment of extra duty pay to teachers, uh, in our K five schools to cover recess. The rate of pay at the time was twenty-five dollars and four cents. Here we saw several teachers covering recess, uh, for thirty minutes, fifteen minutes, two fifteen-minute intervals. Given the, where we sit in terms of our instructional program during this pandemic, it has been incredibly challenging for teachers not only to provide, uh, regular pedagogical instruct strategies during their regular period, but also to provide recess coverage. And so this, in response to agreements that was filed by the MEA, uh, we certainly looked into what was the best resolution to ensure that our young people, our students, were, um, being exposed to recess, which we know developmentally is critical for it. And so we had approved, um, a thirty-day sort of period of time for us to have this coverage and to pay, uh, our teachers, have them submit time sheets for that thirty-day period. Our financial exposure over that period of time, um, I know it was a request of Mr. Lindner, we produced that was just over twelve thousand dollars. Uh, the school district's administration, we continue to, uh, work with our school leaders, come up with a reasonable resolution that does not have any financial impact. Um, and today, we have not been able to do so, and so I have come to the board this evening to ask for an extension of another month. Um, there are a number of things that I am expecting to happen over the next month. So the request is to approve, uh, from March third through April third, uh, for recess coverage, um, to pay teachers who provide such coverage at uh, a rate of pay twenty-five dollars and four cents. We hope that one of our numbers continues to go in the right direction. We're going to continue to look at what is being offered in certain program. We're gonna continue to look at what has been offered in certain programmatically at a K five level, and that we can have a resolution. Here we do not have to be taxed for coverage.
You have a motion to that, please.
I'll make a motion to extend the, the recess coverage.
Can I have a second?
Second, Lisa.
Discussion.
I have one question. We don't have A's to cover. To help cover that position.
So the A's are also based on what their description, work description, they're also working at the time. And additionally, I think, you know, we also want to make sure that because of liability reasons, that we have teachers who are covered for our students in recess activities.
Dr. Thomas.
If I could just also add, you know, we are hopeful that in the next month, the guidance now that the guidance has changed that recess in lunch guidance may be, you know, coming as well. As of right now, that guidance has changed, which means that recess needs to be done in those fifteen-minute chunks. Which leaves us needing, you know, our teacher support and assistance, but we're hopeful that guidance will continue to change as numbers improve and we'll be able to go back to our standardized recess model where we can utilize lunch. Right now, we are using all of our educational assistance to support us in the multi back in the lunch approach that we have to use, but we're hoping for some changes as numbers continue.
So, Dr. Thomas, I would like to request that we have a discussion about this and executive. I have a couple of questions from the personal side that I think would fall under that category.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Back in session. So on the nine point zero four zero four, we do have a motion and we do have a second discussion. We'll pick up a discussion. I'd just like to say that, you know, discussion here on that that is COVID related. So we do have CARES Act money to support the payment of that. So I did want to make the listening public aware of that. Okay, it is coming from the CARE funding because this is related to COVID. Any other discussion?
Just one other point I would like to highlight is that is I certainly want to just express gratitude to the board. I just for the commitment around recognizing that developmentally, the recess is so critical for young people. And so I really appreciate that discussion knowing that we are highlighting what is in their best interest as we're thinking about the decision.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
President Winchell, that concludes the superintendent's report for this.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Number ten, new business, ten point zero one Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Youth Unit Board Representative. And looking for the appointment of Gary Winchell as the UCF Township School District Board Representative to the Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit. Board Director for a new term beginning July one of two thousand and twenty one and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four. This appointment was discussed at the December two thousand and twenty reorganization meeting. Now must come forward for a vote. So I break a motion.
Chris, motion.
Second?
Lisa.
Any discussion?
Thank you for stepping up and taking a four-year term with the IU.
That's appreciated. It's a great, it's a great spot. Appreciate it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Item eleven, solicitors' report, Attorney Senate. Eleven point oh one is the Health and Safety Plan. We are continually attempting to update this Health and Safety Plan as, as guidance and information changes over time. So these changes were based on a prior change in guidance from the CDC. And the change is found on pages twenty and twenty one of the document. And it, and it says, based on the guidance from the Centers for Disease Control, individuals do not need to quarantine after an exposure to another individual with COVID nineteen if they are fully vaccinated. Meaning that two weeks following receipt of a second dose, if, if two doses are required, or two weeks following the receipt of one dose, if only one dose is required. Are within three months following receipt of a last dose in the series, and they have remained asymptomatic since the exposure to the individual with a confirmed case of COVID nineteen. So that's a change to the quarantine regulations as recommended by CDC, depending on whether or not you're vaccinated. Okay? And, and that change is also found on page thirty three. And it's the same change that's part of the summary. And then the only other change is on page thirty six, just reflecting the change in date. Now, the, the Health and Safety Plan, as we're changing it, does not include the new guidance that was updated by the CDC on March nineteenth, three days ago. And, and the reason we don't do that at this point is because just received it three days ago, number one. And number two, the Department of Health nor the Department of Education have reacted to the CDC changes yet. And the Health and Safety Plan document is a template from the Department of Education. And regarding the legal requirements, which are on the left-hand side of the document, that template from PDE has not been changed, as far as I know, in the last three days. So now when we receive a change in the template back from Department of Education, we'll probably come forward with additional changes to the Health and Safety Plan. But just so everyone is on the same page as to what the CDC said, because I know there's, you know, it's an eighteen-page document that, and all you've seen in the press release is maybe one, one paragraph or a couple paragraphs. The change that the CDC is related to students in classrooms. And that's what they said, students in classrooms in elementary schools shall be at least three feet apart. So that's a change. It's in classrooms, it's three feet. In middle schools, high schools, students should at least be three feet apart in areas of low, moderate, or substantial community transmission. In the areas of high community transmission, middle and high school students should be six feet apart if cohorting is not possible. So that, that's the significant change, just that part. Now, the rest of the guidance is the same. The distance between adults, members of the staff and teachers, and students is still six feet. No change in regard to the distance at the time of eating. It is still six feet. Activities in regard to singing, shouting, band, sports, exercise, outdoors or indoors, it's still six feet. In common areas, lobbies and auditoriums, still six feet. And trust transportation and buses, six, or it doesn't say six feet, it just says, create a distance between the children on school buses. For example, seat children, one child per row, skip rows when possible. I think that's what we're doing here in the school district, and that hasn't changed. So just wanted to affirm to everyone as to what the, the CDC has changed. They changed a lot of other things, or, or provided information in regard to other things. We will react to this document once PDE and Department of Health reacts to this document and gives us some guidance as to what they're going to accept, not accept, and whether or not they're going to change their template. So more to come on that, but I just wanted you to understand what we're doing tonight.
Attorney Senate, I have a question about what's on page twenty and twenty one. I'm not understanding the very last part of it. I understand that, you know, you don't need to quarantine if you've had both of your dosage, doses and the two weeks has passed. Within three months following the receipt of the last dose, so does that mean they are saying that that vaccination is no longer effective? Or that the vaccination is still effective, but you need to begin quarantining after that? That'll get us through the end of the school year. I guess my question is, so do we need to be planning for additional vaccinations for the start of next school year?
Well, that is the limitation that they put in at the present time. Now, whether that'll change, it does have a three-month cap. So if it's beyond three months and you're still, or if it's within three months and you're still asymptomatic, you don't have quarantine. If it's beyond that three months since your last dose, then, and you came in contact with someone who has COVID nineteen, you still would go back to the quarantine. Until they change it. Again, we're waiting for the CDC to give us, I think they're trying to be conservative until they have more data and test results as to what the effect of the vaccine is. And, and so as we go further down the line, I think that, that could change.
Okay, thank you.
So if there are no other questions, then I think we would need a motion to approve the amendment to Health and Safety.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion, Chris.
Second?
Second, Shirley.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Okay, then this, the second item, eleven point zero two is the resource socialization of sports recommendations. This is the return to play plans of the athletic department. Again, these are changes that were made prior to the recent announcement, same as the Health and Safety Plan. There was just a, a change in regard that the masking does apply to cheerleading, which wasn't previously in the, in the document. That's on page one. Page two, it does address what sports are not required to wear a mask. And I'm going to read this so everybody is clear on what the, the guidance says. Athletes in sports that require the wearing of a mouthguard and a helmet will be permitted to compete without wearing a mask, given the intimate and medical respiratory issues present. So that's an amendment that wasn't in there before, although I think that's the same protocol that we've been following all along. Tonight, we had a member of the public, you know, raise a concern in regard to track and, and kind of seeking this board's action on, I think, taking a global approach to track. Unfortunately, that's not the guidance that is in the court order nor the Department of Health or Department of Education guidance that we, we have to follow. You don't have the power necessarily to just exempt a sport. You're supposed to look at it on a case-by-case basis, student-by-student basis. It's whether or not, based on what they're doing, the activity, what, the sport they're in, whether or not that presents a health and safety concern for that student. So you can't make a blanket determination as a board that because someone participates in track, they can't, they don't have to wear the mask. That's not how we are able to do it.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And I, I do, and I understand what you're saying. And I understand what, what Mr. Pierce was saying when he was talking. And I'm, I'm looking at page one where it said players should wear a mask unless, and it says players, not the individual student. Players should wear a mask, mouth, nose, indoor, outdoor, practice or competition, unless MTSD has decided that wearing a mask during physical activity will be a safety hazard. Now, at what point do we consider, and I'm not talking about during practice, but as he stated, you've got these kids running full tilt for a short amount of time. They're much faster than probably most of us, all of us, Dr. Roberts. They're all pretty fast. And so they're going to probably be done within the fifteen-minute timeframe, even for the two miles. I really am struggling with us insisting on these kids wearing a mask while they're full tilt running in a race and how we can sit here and say it doesn't pose a safety hazard. And it looks like we have the ability to say, when a runner, and I'm not talking about the kid doing shot put or something like that, but when a runner is running, that we're not putting extra stress on their heart because they can't get enough, they can't get enough oxygen. And I have done a couple workouts, anaerobic workouts with a mask on, and it's not easy. And I'm not working half as hard as these kids are. And I don't understand why we can't make the decision that we think it's a safety hazard when they're running as fast as they're running. I'm not saying everybody, but those runners during a race, how we can say it doesn't pose a safety hazard. I, I think it does, and it more so if it's raining and they're running in the rain and now their mask is wet. I mean, are these kids allowed, are we going to tell them, hey, while you're running, you can take the mask off and take a mask break? Which they're allowed to do if they think they're going to pass out. Will that disqualify them? I don't know. I mean, you can miss stroke in swimming when you take your goggles off and now you're, now you're out of the race. I, I really, I understand what you're saying, Attorney of Senate, and I, I know we're not, I don't think anyone's looking for a blanket, no one has to wear a mask at MTSD. But when these kids are playing and they're in a competition, I, I question if we don't have the right to say it could pose a safety hazard. I mean, it just doesn't make sense that it's, walk quickly down the halls and breathe in the mask. Where do we put the kids' safety before the rules about masking when we're talking about safety and running, which are more apt to, I think, have an issue with a respiratory problem or just simply passing out, lack of oxygen, more so than catching COVID while they're running a race outdoors? I, I, why can't the board consider that and, and make an exception? And, and why isn't that, if it says here, players should wear a mask unless we think it's a safety hazard? How, how do we, can we, can we do it? Is it within our power to say, when these kids are in a race, as soon as you're done racing, put your mask on? But when they're in a race for safety reasons, the runners can run without a mask?
I think we can make that analysis, but we can't do it on a blanket basis. We can only do it on a case-by-case, student-by-student basis.
It doesn't say that here, it says players.
I understand it doesn't say that, that, that's what the order said. The order says, case-by-case, student-by-student, and the only sport athletic competition that is given a blanket are those sports that were wearing a mouthguard and a helmet, as I just read on page two.
Then if the board, the majority of the board was so disposed, how do we go about doing that on a student-by-student, case-by-case basis when these kids are running?
It would require your coaches and your athletic director to analyze each student as to what that student's experiencing. And obviously, they can do that during practices and make an analysis. If the student says, listen, I'm, I'm experiencing a health issue during practice when I run the two mile with my mask on. Or when I run the two mile with my mask on and it's raining. And if they can document that and provide it to the coach and the athletic director, then I think under these rules, we can accept that student out. But I just don't think the board can make that blanket determination without a health and safety analysis on a case-by-case basis.
But we can grant, we can grant the coaches the ability to make that decision on a case-by-case basis.
I think that they have that ability at present time to make a case-by-case analysis in regard to their students. And I hopefully they're doing it, because that is the guidance that we're, we're following.
Maybe that needs to be better articulated to the parents, because the parents believe that, and, and the coaches that I've spoken to are under this, I, it sounds me, they were under that impression, that you kids are wearing a mask, you have to wear the mask in order to, when you're, when you're competing. And there is no individual assessment of each student and whether or not, I, did someone say someone had asthma? If somebody had asthma, I might have a hard time running. So I, then maybe we need to make that more clear to our coaches that they can assess the student. And if a student's saying that they can't breathe, they can't get enough oxygen when they're running with a mask on, they make that decision. But I don't think it's been articulated clear enough to the coaches for them to understand that they have that ability. And the parents were freaking out because they're like, my kid can't breathe.
Well, and obviously, we can communicate that, that wants to be for.
Absolutely, thank you so much, Mr. Bintik. And is Mr. Becker on? Can Mr. Becker weigh in?
His hand is up.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, as, as far as the individual students, we, we've not, we've not told our coaches that they are capable of making that decision on a case-by-case basis. The only thing that, that we were under the impression with, with that particular wording was from PIAA, it said either the athletic director or the principal or needed a medical excuse in order to give that, that designation. So maybe we'll have to look at that a little bit closer, Attorney Senate, and see that if our coaches can make that. If that, if that's true, we'll have to get that information to our coaches. We, we have not so far.
I have a question for Mr. Becker. Um, so are all teams wearing masks in the same sport required, all the, even the visiting teams?
A, a lot of schools are, are not requiring their, their student athletes to, to wear masks.
And when they compete with our schools, are they required to wear a mask?
We, we have required schools when we, when they competed our facilities to wear masks. We we have required schools when we um, when they competed our facilities to wear a mask, yes.
When our students compete in their facilities, are they required to wear a mask?
Ours are, theirs are not.
And does that level the playing field?
No. And how, I guess, how is that, that we're
How can they?
We're we're, they're not, are they, are they plouting the rules in? And then what penalty have they suffered? I, that's very disconcerting. I understand that we're probably very conservative and we're reading the rules. And I I know we're, you know, I can't imagine we'd make a move if they didn't have to to some extent. But so if these other schools in the P I double A District ten that we're in aren't wearing the mask, but yet we are so adamant that every one of our athletes, and in this case, outdoor athletes, have to wear a mask, how are, how are they doing it?
They're not following the rules.
What's the penalty?
There is no penalty at present. Uh you could issue, the Department of Health obviously can issue um some type of penalty.
Do we have any record of them doing that?
No. Do they have the power? I suppose they have the power. And, you know, P I double A is is has the power to regulate. I mean, I think we saw that in in regard to playoffs. P I double A followed the rules, uh required all school districts, we're gonna complain, and the playoffs just follow the rules as I've indicated. And uh so uh I think P I double A recognizes what the order is. Uh I think we recognize what the order is. There are school districts that have chose not to recognize what the order is.
Can somebody confirm what uh sports do not wear masks presently for the spring?
Uh right, right now for the spring, um under the the mask, um uh the the helmet wearing and the mouthpiece wearing, that would be boys lacrosse. So other than that, everyone should be wearing their masks.
Baseball catcher, softball catcher probably doesn't wear a mask.
If if they wear a mouthpiece, they wouldn't have to.
Would it be wise for us to gather together the coaches of the outdoor spring sports and continue this discussion with um how to proceed with it? Because I I I understand exactly what you're saying, Janine. It it's, it does appear to be very unfair to the athletes. And I understand them feeling that. Why do we have to follow these rules when other people are not following the rules? Um but more important than that is the safety aspect of it. But if you are outside playing baseball or softball or track, maybe that's a different, um that's a different situation than someone that's indoors playing basketball. And and those coaches should meet with administration, with Mr. Becker. Um I don't know, Mr. Senate, if you'd like to um be at that meeting also, but I mean, and have a discussion about it. I think the outdoor sports are a different, are a whole different situation than the indoor sports.
I mean, obviously, we'd be happy to talk to the coaches. If I, I think Mr. Becker's familiar with it, then I think the administration is familiar with the rules too. But the more you talk it through, the better uh understanding you can can gather. So I don't see any harm in continuing to talk through it and and recognize that, you know, it does say medical condition here, but but, you know, what is a medical condition documented, medical condition? Is that, you know, shortness of breath is a medical condition, it could be, you know, um so uh we can talk through it further.
Should we uh table this motion?
No, I don't think that changes uh what this uh return to play plan says. Um um and I don't think you can make an amendment that would change anything in this return to play plan because it's personally consistent with the guidance and the orders that exist out there today. Uh the only other thing I wanted to point out off the the mask rule was on page seven. Uh as everyone is aware, obviously, uh Governor Wolf uh amended his order in regard to travel. And so on page seven, we had to change that language at the top as it related to out of state travel uh because that order is no longer in effect. Uh however, how we changed that was because we didn't know what was coming down the path uh and whether he would go back and put a travel ban back in. So we just said that the school district will comply with all orders in regard to travel, e- even future orders going forward. So if something's reinstated for out of state travel for a certain s- uh, you know, state that we're no longer allowed to travel to, then uh we don't have to come back and change this again, it's already in place. So that's all I have with regard to that. And we can see the motion approved.
Ms. McClintock, I agree with your sentiment. I think that it poses a danger when these kids are exerting themselves, running two miles as fast as they can, which is probably, what, eight or ten minutes for the really, really good runners? And I think we should, if we have the ability to give our coaches a little bit more freedom that they did not know about, I think that we should communicate that with them.
Yeah, but motion?
Uh motion, Chris?
Second, Dean.
Any further discussion?
I, a couple of questions. So one of the things in this, uh it talks about transmission levels. Uh just for the general public, how do we determine transmission level? Because I think that there's a misconception there. And I'd just like to to get that on the record, that when people think of transmission level, if you asked me today, what is the transmission level for Erie County? I would tell you it's moderate. But if you asked us for whether or not it was moderate for our P D E for our high school sports, it is not. It is high. Of course, uh or not high, it's, what's the one above us? This is substantial transmission. So we are following the P D E's guidance on that, which does lag two weeks for us to be in any type. So just as it, it's not very clearly labeled in there. So we'd like to just point that out as a topic. Um I know you're gonna come back to us with some other changes, but one of the parts of this that really frustrates me is we talk about the attendance, who can be at an event. And with all the changes to the guidance for outdoor events and indoor events, we are still limiting to athletes, coaches, officials, media, men for non-essential, the home team spectator only, and only two family members per guest, regardless of what the facility can hold. Will we be addressing the fact that we are still limiting to two people when the capacity of our stadiums and event fields is significantly altered now with the new guidance?
Yes, we we can address the new uh requirements of, you know, fifteen to twenty percent uh in regard to of public venues, which came out. And that was a change that was, I think, after this version was submitted to the administration for their consideration. And so again, that will be an additional change to consider. And you're correct uh uh in regard to how uh we look at uh substantial versus moderate. And and although Erie County uh has announced we're in the moderate phase, that's based on the data as of three nineteen, the week before three nineteen. However, the uh, you know, frequently asked uh questions that were uh updated on March third, uh two thousand twenty one uh confirms that for a school district, uh when we're talking about instructional models and it's at school districts, it is a rolling fourteen day uh determination. So you need another week uh of moderate in order to even consider uh being in the moderate phase for our purposes.
Can I, can I say one more thing about uh Mr. Lindner's question about the uh attendance? The one, one thing, the one thing to to keep in mind is um even though they increased the percentage down below that, the governor's orders still state that we have to maintain our six foot distancing. So indoors, it doesn't help us a whole lot. Outdoors, it will help us some. Um we have marked off in our bleachers, uh everybody has six foot distancing, so we could increase those numbers some. But it doesn't necessarily give us the entire, you know, outdoor twenty, twenty five percent that that he allows us. Um just simply because of the six foot distancing rules. But we could go more than two per home athlete, if that's what
Mr. Becker, I I would challenge that, that that's six foot per household.
So if I'm coming with my wife and my two kids, we're one household, but four people.
Correct.
It could still be six foot. So we're talking, the potential is very different. And we could actually get to you know, those twenty five percent capacities if we considered households and potted those areas on the, in the event facilities.
Yeah, and what what we've done so far is uh with with our return to play plan saying two family members per athlete, um we have marked off two spots, six feet, two spots, six feet. Yeah, we could increase that more if the households were bigger.
I would just appreciate if we could look at that. I know there's a lot of family members that really like to see their kids play their senior years here without having to give up a ticket for games.
Darcy, you had something?
I, um I just wanted to address the, um if you don't mind, thank you. On, you had asked about the low, moderate, um substantial ratings. That um determined the instructional model we use. So once we have been in moderate, it has to be for the fourteen rolling days. But moderate is determined by an incident rate per one hundred thousand residents of ten to under a hundred, or five percent to ten percent of the P C R positivity rate. When you are in the moderate model for P D E, you are still required to be in a blended or hybrid learning model. It's not until you are in the low that you can have the full in-person return.
Yeah, this is all topics, talking athletic, but back to academics. Is there a chance we're gonna see five day a week, or should we just plan for our families that we will probably be in this blended model from now to the fourth quarter as well?
So two thoughts. Um for the purposes of consistency, because when we survey um our students to get their voice, we've heard loud and clear that our students believe the deal's pride much better um under some consistent model. So moving back from four to five days disrupts that consistency. The second thought is, uh we've continued to anchor our decision about which instructional model we're gonna be in based on the most recent and up to date data. And so it should be, and we plan to review the data at the end of this third quarter. And if it certainly provides compelling data from every stakeholder group uh that we should go back to five days a week, uh it is not off. So that decision is point is one that we are definitely gonna revisit at the end of the third quarter.
Any other discussion? We have a motion, we have a second?
I guess, I do have one thing.
Yeah.
So if we're gonna talk about a revision to this Attorney of Senate, like that will come, our next committee, the whole meeting, will be well after the some of these new directives come into effect. Is there any way we can get that, you need to wait for us to approve the next one to move to those enhanced uh opportunities for athletes and for spectators in our facilities until we vote? Or is that something that we can approve at this point as the guidance changes, as the direction of the superintendent, until it could be voted on at the next board meeting? Because I'd hate to waste a week of opportunity for our students if we could maybe give some tentative approval in advance.
Well, we can, we can provide additional approval, but you'll have to identify what that is. Um because I'm not clear as to, you know, we can, we can approve this plan. And then uh if you want to entertain some other direction to the board in regard to the use of your venue, um as as you suggested, for example, expanding tickets to allow households from two house, two people to four people or something like that, then that would be specific direction that we then could have um the administration investigate and and move forward uh based on their determination as how do you do it? You know, you're gonna, you're gonna give direction, but I think you need to give some uh leeway to the administration as to how they implement that direction. Because I know that they're gonna meet, you know, I think Wednesday or or in regard to the athletic plan and and how it can be implemented and what they need to do. Uh which is why it's not included here, because I knew that they were gonna meet coming, this coming Wednesday to reflect on those things and and then determine how you would proceed and how we would change return to play. And we could, they could do all that and we could bring it forward and and uh
Well, we have a meeting on
You have thirty first.
Meeting on the thirty first. We could theoretically bring it up as that as a special agenda item.
If we could.
I would have to readvertise.
We would have to re, because we only advertise for, but that's, that's an.
Because the third is when the new guy, but guidance from the state takes effect. We don't meet again until well, the twelfth. So I mean, that's an, I mean, I guess it's only technically a weekend's worth of events, but there are so limited events this year. For to give them the best opportunity possible.
And I think that we should let the administration sit down, meet, discuss it, and figure out what can and cannot be done rather than try to make a decision. You know, here tonight, well, we don't know the facts and circumstances. I think Mr. Becker's gotta go back. And I think the administration team wants to meet and and determine what's, what what we can do and what we can't do under the new guidance.
We could, I'm sorry. Um regarding the um meeting on March thirty first, I'm I'm just looking at the school calendar. The court, third quarter ends on April first. We don't have another board meeting between now and um other than that meeting on the thirty first, which was just designated for um budget. If we move from four day to five day, does that need board approval? Because the fourth quarter begins then April seventh.
For my knowledge, my son corrected. I think that should be a an administrative decision.
Okay.
Attorney of Senate?
It it was a, obviously a recommendation, but you would also have to amend your return, your health and safety plan because your health and safety plan indicates you're gonna be in a hybrid model, even if you're in moderate. Um and so that would require a change to your health and safety plan. It will require a change to your attestations. Um and so all those things would have to come forward. So I think that although it's obviously your determination and your recommendation, those are formal votes to change the health and safety plan and giving you direction to sign your attestation differently than you personally have.
Yes.
I'm just mentioning that that would have to, if that's going to happen, it would have to take place at that March thirty first meeting, which would mean adding that to the agenda changes the um.
I'm sorry to interrupt. If you wanted to add additional items to the March thirty first uh meeting, I would just advertise it for purposes as opposed to getting the line item.
Oh, right.
And everything.
I just will have to readvertise.
Right, we'll have to re.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think that's good.
That way it gives you the flexibility to bring forward what feel you need to bring.
Okay. So any other discussion?
So if, once it's, um, we make the vote on this, then we can make the changes, so we revote for this?
Yeah, we'll, we've been continuing to update the return to play plan as as the change, the guidance has changed. And so this is, unfortunately, it's happening almost monthly now. Uh and it will continue to change.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. We have discussion, eleven point oh two, re-socialization of the athletic plan. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Against? Hearing none, motion passes.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Remarks? Uh twelve point zero one, Northwest Tri County. Um the minutes from last meeting is uh attached. Uh so we will see that and those will be public, so people can also view and public see those. But like to uh thank everyone for the appointment for the next three years. It's a board I do enjoy of all the great things they do. And I think evident is the what they did for our teachers in Erie County. You know, their Brad Whitman, the director, really, you know, worked with the office, the governor's office to move with the teachers from one B to one A. And I think over four thousand teachers had signed up for the mask, uh vaccination. So great job for that. And I think in Mill Creek, what percentage?
Sixty seven.
Sixty seven percent. So over two thirds of our teachers are now vaccinated. Sixty seven percent. So over two thirds of our teachers are now vaccinated. Um, and thank you for the budget, uh, that we passed. We'll be discussing that this Wednesday at our monthly meeting. So that's all I have. So twelve point zero two, Erie County Technical School. John?
Yes, uh, we have a meeting. And, uh, I included, uh, some of the items that we talked about. A lot of the meeting, uh, revolved around the project, obviously. And, uh, Chris Coughlin, uh, the architect presented, uh, uh, the actual drawings that, uh, are going to be going out for bid here. And, uh, he gave us a Dropbox, uh, for those drawings. So got them out today. Linda got them out. Uh, so if you want to take a look at it, it has everything there, all drawings, all specs. Uh, we're having a meeting on the twenty fifth, uh, this Thursday. So if anybody has any comments, uh, it'd be appreciated. Get them back to me and I'll bring them, bring them with me. A couple, couple of those highlights is, uh, and a couple of meetings ago and a couple resolutions ago, uh, there were, uh, talk that the project was going to be a twenty-seven point seven million dollar project. Uh, Chris indicated at the meeting last month that no, it actually, he's estimating thirty-two point five. So that's a, that's a change, uh, uh, back up to the original cost. Uh, for whatever reason, uh, we're going back up to that number. So it changes our number, uh, a possible number, uh, a little bit, but we'll see what happens. And also the, um, the J O C approved, uh, could be approximately fifty or sixty thousand dollars to come out of the Erie County Technical General Fund Budget, uh, to proceed with giving these drawings, these completed drawings to, uh, BIU for approval and ultimate bid. So that, that is going forward, uh, using monies from the, uh, general fund budget. It's eight, eight to two. I voted against it. So what, so what, uh, it's somebody else up there. Uh, there's a lot of reasons not to do it, I felt. So that's why I vote no at the time. Uh, also, uh, there is a superintendent of record up there. Rick Emmerich, uh, has initiated the committee of four different, uh, four district superintendents to pursue changing the formula, uh, which we're all interested in. Uh, if any progress has been there, Ian, have you made any meetings with that? Not sure.
Yeah. So we've had one meeting, um, to date with the four superintendents convening with the goal of uh, just revisiting some of the previous discussions, but also trying to find a way forward. And so uh, I believe that Mr. Emmerich is, uh, going to schedule another meeting in the coming week or two.
Okay. All right. So it's moving forward. Uh, also, uh, big news, our, our business manager up there, Terry Berchard, uh, retired effective three eleven. So she's essentially gone at this point. Uh, large loss up there, but we wish her well. Uh, the, the school calendar was approved and there were other personnel issues going on. And, uh, it's starting to get busy up there. If you've driven by, uh, for the roundabout area, a lot of things going on in the dirt. And, uh, the good news is, uh, that's a check. They gave us the check around sixty thousand dollars, not us, Erie County Tech, uh, for the condemnation proceedings and all that. So that was a, that was a good, that is a good thing. And, uh, again, uh, we distributed the drawings in a Dropbox type thing. And again, take a look at it. If you have any questions or issues, please get back to me and I'll bring them forward. Uh, as, as we've heard previous with Mike, it took three, four months, maybe four months to, uh, get something through BIU and who knows what they're going to find and, and how that's going to work. So it's going to be a while, uh, no matter what, plus at least a two month bid period. So we're probably talking, uh, mid-year. They want to start it this year. I'm not sure that that's, that honestly can happen. So, anyway, um, and the, uh, meeting minutes are, uh, up on the Erie County web, Erie County Tech School website, uh, if you're interested for that. Thank you.
Anything, John?
Just a clarification. Uh, I mean, the, the, the amount of a project is unclear at this point in time. All that Coughlin did, he did not change the bid specifications based on your discussion. What he has sent out is the bid specifications for the project. Ten out of the eleven districts did approve the twenty-seven, you know, million dollar amount. So, I mean, I'm not saying that the, the, it, the thirty-two is back on the table by the operating committee nor the school districts. It is just that the bid documents were not modified based on that resolution that was adopted by ten out of the eleven districts. And if it comes back at a number that's higher than twenty-seven point nine, that, that may require additional modification and clarification in regard to the project. But I didn't want anyone to get the impression that, that the number has, you know, gone up to back up thirty-two. Nobody's approved thirty, going back up to thirty-two point two million dollars, thirty-two point five million dollar project. Uh, the J O C hasn't and nor have school districts.
Well, Chris is telling us that it's going to be thirty-two point five.
That, that's an estimate, original, but well, that number is not even his estimate. I mean, that's not his estimate, it's something less. I don't, I don't want confusion out there in regard to the project.
Okay. I'm confused. Well, yeah, you're right. The, the, the J O C, without Chris's approval, said, you know, let's do twenty-seven, the superintendent said, let's do twenty-seven point seven. And that's the basis of which we've made some decisions. Well, the architect is telling us he's, it's going to be thirty-two point five in his opinion. So.
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not. I totally agree. But that's.
We won't know until the bids come.
That's right. But the new norm right now is.
Just a guess at it, including contingents, which is the contingency was significant, six.
And, and everything we've done so far is based on thirty-two point five.
Contingent was six million dollars, sixty-seven million dollars. Contingent.
Everything we've done so far is based on a total price, thirty-two point five.
Oh, estimate.
Yes. At this point, yes, we don't have anything back yet, nor do we know what the soft cost. Okay.
Sorry. I want to make sure we're all on the same page. Well, you can tell it's, uh, must be election, uh, season because, uh, starting to get a little interest on the vote tech community. College, it's a couple of the county executive candidates have reached out there, trying to talk about that, go up for tours and things like that. So that's all good. Maybe it's all good. Twelve point zero three, Mill Creek Education Foundation report, Chris Busco, Mr. Busco.
Yes, I have a couple of items here, less stressful items. But yes, uh, before I get started, um, there is a link on M E F or, or M E F on our website. Uh, also, if you want to follow up on any of this information, uh, go to M E F's website directly. But the big one is the Popluck fundraiser will be open April first on the M E F website. We will run through the end of the month. Bag is five dollars. Profits from the sale will benefit M E F's mini grant program for teachers and staff. And those deliveries will be made to the school the week of May third, three to seven. The big reminder for businesses out there is, uh, M E F has approved educational improvement and pre-K scholarship organization for tax credit. May fifth for businesses, May fifteenth, excuse me, for businesses already committed to one, two years and July second for businesses submitting an initial application or additional application. Um, and last little reminder here, last time to apply for an M E F grant for the twenty, twenty, twenty-one year will be April first. And we also have the golf outing coming up on June eleventh. Check out the website for information and prices. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Busco. Twelve point zero four, P S B A.
Thank you, President Winchell. I have three items here on the, uh, P S B A report for tonight. Uh, first one is the essentials of board leadership with P S B A. They're holding their fourth of four, uh, series. This is crisis challenges and communication. Just a reminder, this is typically, uh, president, vice president of the school board interacting with other school board members from across the Commonwealth and sharing ideas and, uh, learning a little bit more about how they handle things like crises, challenges and communication. These are free. Um, they are offered April fourteenth, twelve o'clock to one fifteen, and the second session is six o'clock to seven fifteen. Next item here is the National School Board Association. Their twenty twenty-one online experience will be held on April eighth through the twelfth. It is seven hundred and fifty dollar, uh, registration fee for individuals, but they're having a sale right now, which, um, is great. Buy one, get one free if, uh, anyone is interested in attending that. I've listed the keynote speakers here, left them on here from last time. Final item here on P S B A is, uh, P S B A puts out a survey each year. And I've attached the full, um, full version of the survey. It's thirty-two pages and quite, uh, interesting information, but I summarized just a couple items, took some bullets out of the thirty-two pages. I would encourage the, the board or the core team to take a look at this. Um, there's some really interesting stuff here. Three hundred and ten school districts responded to the survey. That's sixty-two percent of the schools. Uh, sixty-nine percent of the school districts said the most challenging part of navigating the pandemic was inadequate and consistently changing guidance from the state, federal and local authorities. And I think that we, uh, talked about that a couple of times tonight under Attorney Senate's report. Uh, thirty-five percent of our schools started the school year with full-time in-person learning. I thought that was really a high, a high number. Um, I'm still happy with the way we started with our hybrid model, but that was much higher than I thought. Next bullet here, only twenty-three percent of school districts provided a one-to-one electronic device program at the start of the pandemic for their students. I was a little disappointed and, and almost depressed to think that, you know, three-quarter of those students out there did not have their own device during this pandemic. Next one for Mr. O'Toole, sixty-nine percent of school districts have, uh, indicated they will be forced to raise taxes in the coming year. Uh, next item, uh, uh, we had an increase of almost six hundred percent in enrollment in virtual programs across the Commonwealth. Not, uh, unexpected. Ninety-eight percent of the school districts, uh, included or plan to include funding next year for a virtual option, an expand, an expanded virtual option, very much like we're talking about. And from a charter school perspective, um, the increase was twenty-two, over twenty-two thousand additional students left to go to charter schools, which the estimate is they took three hundred and thirty-five million dollars across Commonwealth out of the budgets of our school districts. And lastly, I, I put this chart on there, up in the left corner for, uh, Erie County. It looks like Gerard is the only school district here that actually had a significant decrease in their charter enrollment, um, over the last year. And I believe they started one hundred percent in person. Okay, that's all for our P S B A report.
Great update. Good. Thank you. Thank you. Twelve point zero five, school board remarks. Have any remarks?
Um, I just wanted to say, I thought that our district, along with the IU, did a fantastic job getting our teachers vaccinated. Um, I mean, it was, and, and they, and I'm so happy that so many of them, you know, went ahead and, and took the vaccine. It wasn't meant to be mandated. And I think that's really going to be helpful moving forward. Uh, they'll feel better or hopefully maintain our four or five days, whatever we end up doing, um, which is best for everyone. But I was really impressed with how many, uh, were vaccinated. And, uh, that was a great effort by everyone. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to, uh, last night on sixty minutes, I don't know if anyone caught that, but if you're not, please, please go online, Google it, sixty minutes. They did a section from the Naryata City Schools down in Georgia, talking about going back to school, the interaction with the kid. Really, really interesting. And, you know, Shirley and I were talking afterwards, uh, how great it was. And she said, the only thing that could have made it better is if they interviewed Dr. Roberts. There's a great segment on sixty minutes last night. So please take time to look at that. The similarities with us is incredible. So again, he was a leader and thank you Dr. Roberts for doing much of this.
Thanks to the pandemic team. Certainly want to give a lot of kudos to that team.
Um, and a cheer too, to our co-ed competitive cheer team that went to District Ten and, and Hershey on, uh, April ten. A great job on the co-ed, uh, kind of cheer team, District Ten cheer. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say, nice job with the still popping, uh, video and the, um, sentiment of giving the teachers some popcorn last week. It was, uh, well received. And just to highlight, you know, a year into this pandemic, really, really nice job. And also, um, the e-signatures that are coming along, very excited about e-signatures and no longer printing out the code of conduct. That, that's incredible. And I'd love to ha- have Mr. O'Toole tell us sometime in the future what that saved us.
Great. Just a couple, if I may, just certainly building on, um, the observation from Mr. McFlint, the conservative new president Winchell with regards to the Governor Wilkie initiative and the unbelievable partnership with IU five under Brad Whitman that allowed my superintendent peers in all the districts and I, through that collaboration, we need to get our teachers to the place of um, being vaccinated and really combatting some of the vaccine hesitancy we've seen in a lot of places. Uh, but I absolutely want to shout out and acknowledge our personnel and pandemic teams with really special efforts, uh, under the, the guidance and tutelage of, um, Sister Superintendent Darcy Mosley, um, Randy Swinney, Yoli Tamlin, Mackenzie O'Connor, and certainly your pandemic coordinator, Christopher Prozick, and some of our school nurses. Uh, you have no idea, um, how much time that they've put in over the weekend and Sundays. I mean, one of the hardest working group of folks that I've seen. And so had it not been for the efforts and the responsiveness, we would not have gotten to this point to have sixty-seven percent of our teachers vaccinated. Um, and, and they include, um, our aides or food service providers or bus drivers, substitute teachers, and I think even our student teachers. So thanks to you. And just building off of, um, what we just shared by Mr. Dean, e- even in reading an article recently to, and realizing that while you shared less than forty percent of those districts started here in one-to-one, nationally, the data is, um, even more disheartening. And, you know, I'd be remiss if I did not give kudos out to our technology team under the, the guidance of Tim Mosley. We are in a really solid place. Yes, you know that, and we've shared that you would, in the spirit of transparency, when we've had uh, some challenges with technology, but we quickly, the team worked well to overcome those so we can meet the needs of our teachers and staff. And I said recently, even at a risk of sudden braggadocio, that I believe that as a district, mid-termship school district, um, can probably, is probably ranked among any school district in this country in terms of technology that we have provided for our teachers and students during this pandemic. Because I'm constantly keeping my finger on the pulse through my own network about what is happening nationwide. So kudos to that team. Yes, we still have years in which we need to go, but that is just fine. Ladies and gentlemen, particularly for our community members, you know, with the data with regards to vaccination, and the recent updates and changes from the CDC, our commitment to a robust mitigation efforts will still remain in place. The light is truly at the end of the tunnel. And I am, I know we all are hoping that this data, coupled with the long awaited seventy-degree weather that we've had today and will have later on this week, this is time for us to be even more disciplined. And I want to really, you know, see, this is time for us to be disciplined. While there is a lot of safety within the district and within our schools, we are asking adults, um, who work in the mid-termship school district, as well as our committed community members, for us to really adhere to those mitigation guidelines. There is no time for us to regress. We cannot afford to have that. Additionally, one of our priorities is the celebration of the amazing class of twenty twenty-one. Five hundred and sixty brilliant, resilient young people, all of whom are full of promise and are quite frankly dependent on the school, the district leadership team and I, to ensure that at the culmination of their high school journey, that it's filled with a lot of pomp, circumstance and great memories. Particularly given what they have endured during this pandemic year. Parents, community members and board. We have a capable team of leaders and teachers right here at McDowell High School who are diligently planning to celebrate these students. Each of the five hundred and sixteen, believe me, they're leaving no stones unturned in terms of their creativity, innovative ideas and constantly thinking about how can we celebrate these students? Doing the numerous meetings and communication related to the planning of celebrations. Doing the numerous meetings and communication related to the planning of celebrations of this amazing class of twenty twenty one, um they have also taken into consideration lots of the feedback from some of our parents. Uh they're going above and beyond to discuss the graduation ceremony, prom, and all the senior activities. Parents, students, and community members, we thank you for your continued patience as we plan for a safe and celebratory group of senior activities. You will receive communication in the coming week or so, and we'll give you hopefully ample time so that you can respond to us with additional suggestions, as well as to start planning for these events that are coming up very shortly on us. So thank you for your patience during this time. Just a couple of quick student celebrations um to build on the celebration of our uh co-ed cheer team. A couple of weeks ago, we celebrated our debate team's performance at the district championships. And we cheer them on as they qualify for participating in the state tournament. I am delighted to report that our team under the tutelage of uh Coach Collins scored two state championships. That is a big deal. Sophia DePlacido won the impromptu speaking for the state championship. Uh there are many adults, although I don't have the actual numbers worldwide, but who struggled with impromptu speaking, but I know that she's probably up to like ten percent. She did an amazing job. Um secondly, we had Kyra Smith, who won the state championship in commentary. And this is an event where students construct a seven-minute speech within twenty minutes on a topic, any topic from the news. Outstanding job. We also had two uh top finishers, including Alexis Hushkins, who placed ninth in persuasive speaking, and Anthony DiAndrea, who placed fifth in humorous interpretation. Additionally, also want to highlight one more high school uh celebration, and that is uh our senior Sharon Liu, who is amongst an elite group of students in the country. She is one of only nineteen AP research students nationally that will be published in the Journal of Student Research, volume nine, issue two. You can't miss it. I give you the volume and the issue. Make sure you read her work. Outstanding. Congratulations to the team and their coaches. And final thank you to our Tracy Elementary School students who won Tuesday, March ninth at our um instructional rounds. And we had Mrs. Winchell there, who is also enjoyed as they shared their experiences and really reminded us of what it really means to say that it's cool to be kind. We want to thank um those students, Annabelle Telesco, Lauren Waters, Tanyani Potana Cole, Juliana Jones, Phoenix Capella, Jalen Smith, Julian Figueroa, and Kenley Walker. They promised that, uh share with them that they'll have their appearance, uh make sure that they log in so that they can get that acknowledgement. And as always, this is an opportunity just to thank our teachers and staff for the work that they have done and continue to do each and every day. Uh personally, when I saw um the CDC's news guidance, like many of you, I got in, I became incredibly excited. Um that coupled with the fact that I too have uh now been vaccinated, it, it, it really builds a level of confidence, even as we're considering the possibility of moving back to five days a week instruction. Our teachers are doing great work based on what we've just shared, all of those celebrations. Can you just imagine what will happen when we are back in a state of normalcy? The sky's the limit. And we should all be looking forward to that. Thank you, teacher, staff, students, and parents. We appreciate your partnership.
Thank you, President.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Okay, before we adjourn, I'd just like to uh remind all our listeners and viewers that this meeting is recorded and on YouTube. And uh many of the topics that we talked to, we'll go to the public viewing site on our website, www.mtsc.org. And in addition, once again, please visit us and like us on our Facebook page, Mokry Township School District. With that, we go thirteen point oh one, adjournments. Have a motion, please.
Motion. Dean.
Second.
Chris.
Discussion. Never did any on that. So, okay, I'm ready to say aye.
Aye.
Against? Yes, we do.
How are we going? We going to get Rick?